That's where he is. Okay, exactly. I might have to turn this one down.
It's pretty live.
Good evening. Welcome to this evening's study session. It's good to have the city manager back. Welcome back.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So, and our first agenda item this evening is city council policy manual review. Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf is here to discuss the council policy manual with us. Good evening, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening. We will pick it right back up where we left off last time we discussed policies. Thinking we're, Mayor Protam and I are trying to do this in forty minutes and leave twenty minutes for the survey results, so we'll see how that goes. Starting with where we picked up last time, again, as a reminder, these are items that are not currently addressed in your, in your policy manuals, so they're in your draft manual. They're items that we'll need some guidance on as to whether or not, or in what form, to include them in a new draft of your policy manual. Starting tonight- Sure. Starting tonight with council agenda setting. So, this is a topic that has come up at various times. I think probably more commonly came up, or more frequently came up with the previous council in how agenda setting happens. With regular business, yes, but I think more so with study session items and clarifying what that process is. So, for instance, if you were to memorialize what is your current process, it would be to say that there are weekly mayor-manager meetings that are recorded, available for public consumption, but not open to the public, not posted meetings. And then to clarify exactly what the process is, is if at any point the whole body would like to add an item or remove an item from a future session. This also relates to off-agenda items in that if you do ask for an agenda item to be added to a meeting, you know, do you want consensus for that? Are you memorializing that in your policy, that type of thing? So, really, this is about trying to establish a set policy that you will reflect in your manual for agenda setting.
Okay, so we'll open it for discussion. And I, right now, as Mark said, we are recording the mayor-manager meeting, and it is not posted. But, so I'm assuming that if somebody called and requested and wanted to hear it, how could they listen to it?
I believe the current procedure is, member of the public requests the recording, we make that recording available.
Okay, to them?
That's right.
Okay. It is recorded right now, and currently also, by consensus, council can add or remove any item to a future agenda at any time. And that is really why I sent that email out and asked council, you know, if they wanted to add an agenda item, if they would, you know, please notify me and the city manager so that we were both aware. Because some things had come forward saying, by consensus, you know, council had said it, and I was totally unaware. So, I just think that it makes it more open and transparent to do it that way if we're going to add. I mean, if it happens like here in the study session, or on the dais, generally, we do keep track that consensus has already been initiated. So, Councilmember Olson.
I still am unaware of, when did that not hap- what sparked that? Because when did we not follow it? Because I'd like to better understand that. And then, secondly, what do we do with just re- There are a lot of times where people say, "I want this on the study session," and no one else says anything. And we don't go around and say, "Does everybody else want this?" So, if we're going to do this, let's do it all the way. There are times when some people ask, and it gets on, and I think, "Oh, okay." And there are other times where, "Wow, this must be loud enough for you."
I think he's adjusting it.
It's like feedback. So, I'm in favor of this. I think everyone should know what's getting on the, on the agenda overall. I think there are times when things are going to come up, and you need to put something on, and we just need to do it. I mean, we've had roads totally collapse over the weekend, where you needed to come and bring something up, and we had to talk about it. So, I would assume that that's always going to happen, and we're not going to say, "No, we didn't put that on the agenda." But I'd like to know we're going to follow a process of really finding out whether there's consensus or not.
Okay, so, well, and that's, that's kind of what I was asking for. Basically, what happened, Councilmember Martinez, and I don't think it was only her, there was some, we wanted to make sure that the policy manual got on the agenda. And the city manager and I had cleaned everything else off of the agenda except for the RTD, because we already had people coming that night. And then, the, that night when I came, the procedure manual had been added in front of the policy manual. And, and so, it just, there was a statement saying that it was staff and council consensus moved the procedure manual forward. So, that is why I asked if council would notify the mayor and the city manager, so that, I don't mind if the, if it gets changed, but then I don't like to be gone after because we didn't get to what we said we were going to get to. I mean, the-
But it was on the agenda, right? Was that, was that night, it was, did you not, you wanted only RTD on the agenda that night?
Only RTD and the policy manual were originally on the agenda when we set the agenda on Tuesday. And then, when the packet came out on Thursday, the procedure manual was put in there. I'm, I'm okay that it went forward, but it just caught me by surprise. And so, and I do know that there are times things come up. And I am glad that the procedure manual is done, but the procedure manual ended up taking quite a bit of time to complete, and then we ended up not spending that much time on the policy manual again. So, that's really why that came forward.
And then, on the RTD piece, that was just a decision you all made to put on the agenda. That wasn't something we all agreed to, right?
Right. It was already on the agenda because people had been invited to come, correct?
Yes.
So-
I would also love for us to talk about when we invite people, and who, and how much time they get, and what the format will be. I think that would be really useful to us, too. Because sometimes, I mean, I thought that was time that could have been shortened a bit.
The RTD time?
Just read it. I can read things, and then you can do question and answer. I would prefer that, but I don't know what other people think. But I would prefer to read a lot of the stuff, and rather than have someone read to me-
Okay.
-they're doing.
All right, that's fine. And I mean, I, I understand that for the most part, and I didn't necessarily want to read all of the, when we went over the discretionary policy, but the truth is, in hindsight, that was the right thing to do because the people in the city that are listening or sitting here don't know what each one of those said.
Yeah, that was, I was referring to, I was referring to RTD.
Okay.
Not the discretionary thing I think we had to do. I don't think there was any way around it, although I'd rather not be read to, but I think we can do it. And that one didn't bother me. It's that we had RTD here, and it took a lot of time, and there were other stuff that we needed to get to, so.
Okay, so, are you all okay with the mayor-manager setting the agenda? Or do we want to set the agenda together? Councilmember Questa?
When would that setting take place? Would that be at the end of our regular meeting?
Typically, that's what we tried for a while. In the previous council was having it at the end of the council meeting, or at the end of the study session. I think under city managers' choices where it ended up being if we, if we set the agenda together.
And then, we would all vote then upon it? It would take a majority to approve whatever is set?
Well-
If it were to go that route?
Yes, yes.
Will you say that consensus?
It has to be consensus. It has to be consensus. Councilmember Olson.
You know, it hasn't, it's been a while since we used to do it this way, but when Mayor Penn, and before then, one of the things we did was about every other month, I don't know if you were on here for a little while, overlapped, we actually, as a council during study session, looked at the list on study items that we had all kind of, kind of were piling on over time, and prioritized which ones do we think need to come up soon, which can we put to the back burner again. We kept moving things up, and the manager always had things that he knew were going to come at some point. And then, we, we went over that, that list with some items, which you do already, and agreed, you know, yeah, this looks like, I mean, the things change, but it was a little bit more of a heads-up. Everyone knew what was coming, so we didn't have to keep asking, "Are we ever going to get to such and such?" I would prefer that we go back to that process of a little bit. It does, it means you still, in mayor, Protam, manager meeting, still make decisions on, you know, based on what we've given you. You have to kind of move things around and figure out how long it's going to take. And if you do have RTD that needs to come, then that gets known. But I just think it would be more helpful for all of us to know. So, when you presented that night on voting for mayor, I didn't, I actually didn't think you were given a very good hearing that night, because we really were, we didn't have any of the materials. We hadn't really done a real study session on it. So, I felt badly when we left, because it felt like you just got kind of shut down. But we didn't re, that was not a study session. It was more of like you coming to promote something that we'd never done something like that before. Yet, your voice, I think, would be important to have a study session on if we all agree. That's how we want to do it. So, I just would love to have a little bit more heads-up. We're going to do it. That's how we're going to do it. People are going to come with the preparation that the staff have done for it, so.
Okay.
That's just my-
All right, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I really like the suggestion of revisiting our laundry list of topics every so often, so we can prioritize. Because like you mentioned, I don't know if that's me. Priorities change, you know, and other things become more important. And so, I think it would be good for all of us together to revisit that every so often and say, you know, we really want to push this higher on the list, or this lower, or we need to take this off, or I think that would be beneficial for us.
Okay. Other thoughts? Councilmember Wing?
I would be okay, I, I'm in agreement with, with the city manager and the mayor, Mayor Protam, of course, in this instance, setting the agenda.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Berentine?
I'm a little confused that if we're recording it, why it has to be requested through an open records request. If we're recording it, it should just be available on the website as a normal matter, of course. And I'm okay with the agenda being set by the mayor and the city manager. The only other issue about the agenda setting is that part of the agenda gets set by the public, and it is noticed on our agenda what they're going to be talking about, which makes it, qualifies it for the open records. So, then that becomes a topic that the public is aware is going to be being discussed. So, I want to make sure that we include that piece in there, too.
Okay.
Just in case, I mean, we had a conversation before. The people were worried that if they made any comments, they were making comments on issues that had not been in the qualifications for open meetings law and sunshine. And we do have a section that the public is able to set part of the agenda for that, and then that opens up for discussion. The public has been notified.
Okay, thank you. So, do we have consensus to move forward with looking at the tentative study session topics maybe every couple months, or? Councilmember Questa?
Yes, I would say if all members have a general idea of what it will be approaching us, and then the mayor and, or Mayor Protam and city manager just set them accordingly. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
And I am too, and I totally affirm what Councilmember Berentine said. I think if we're going to tape a meeting, record, let's put it up. We were before. I don't know what, I tried to go look, listen to something, because I thought maybe I missed something once, but couldn't find it, and I, it wasn't that big of a deal. But I'd love to have that be open for everyone to listen to. And I totally agree that the mayor, Protam, manager meeting really should be then where everything's taken, you set the agenda. I just do not want to be involved in micromanaging that piece. But I do want to help give more consensus so that you go forward without things flipping on you when you get here.
I appreciate that. And, and I am all on board with having it recorded, posted at a set time, and, and posted on the website also, so it is more open and transparent. Councilmember Berentine?
I agree with everything that's been said. I just don't want to have any misunderstanding that this precludes anything like what Councilmember Questa did that night. He could have done that under council member choice, and it wouldn't have made any difference. You don't have to necessarily notice that, and nor does it take away our ability to make motions. And, I mean, so, we'll have to look at some of that piece of it. But I want to make sure that we understand that that doesn't take away that opportunity either. But I'm for everything that's been said, so that's fine.
And, and also, I want it to be open so that if, if something comes up, because constituents have called, all six of us or all seven of us at some point in time, and, and you want to send an email to the city manager and myself, then we could actually change it also. To be real honest, whether I'm in this position to decide it, I, I don't really want to take time. I like ending at nine, or soon after if we can, but when we put the agenda setting on the end, then it adds to that. So, do we have consensus to move forward with those things? Okay.
I think we got it. Thank you.
All right, and one other thing. Do we need to talk a little bit about what goes on in the regular session agenda setting? How that, that comes up?
Yeah, those are a little more difficult, Mayor, inasmuch that there are items that come forth, obviously, due to business needs of the city, and those are somewhat, somewhat more difficult to project. We have been trying to push so that department directors and others who place items on an agenda, regular meeting agenda, do so a couple weeks ahead, so I can have that forecasted. Been sharing that with you in our mayor-manager meetings. But, again, those are not always accurate either, and in some cases, the, that's not the attorney's fault, but there are complex agreements that go along with those, and sometimes they're ready, sometimes they're not. But we can do the best we can to try to forecast those. But, again, that's more of the administrative piece of the city. Some of those things that come forward, obviously, are very transactional and require the city council's approval. For those other items that we can predict and project, certain agreements that are annual in nature, such as, you know, the Inglewood Trolley, things like that, we know exactly when those have to go forward, or IGAs with the county for normal elections, those types of things we can, we can do. But it's, it's too difficult to probably have council engaged in determining what gets on that agenda from a business perspective.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, if not, we can move on to the-
Great. And I'll just add, in terms of your future topics, we generate a report that's easy to share with council, and I think for the most part, we've, we've cleared a lot of the rest of the year in terms of topics, knowing that you are currently working through a strategic planning process, and may have an opportunity to discuss what those top, important topics are to bring to study session over the next several months. So, I think there'll be a lot of discussion about that.
And I think also, on every week, we get an update on the tentative study session agenda topics. So, if somebody saw something on there and wanted to, you know, speed one of those things up, that would be appropriate also.
Great, thank you. All right, moving right along, board and commission procedures. So, I just want to take a moment to try to distinguish between what we're currently developing, which is a manual for, for boards and commissions. So, this is to help boards and commission members, chairpersons, kind of with the, the procedures of, and the expectations of, of our boards and commissions. That, in essence, is if you were able to attend our, our training on boards and commissions, tries to put in on paper a lot of the items that we were covering. Goes over some of the Bob's Rules of Order, is a part of that as well. That's different, and that's not what we're suggesting for trying to memorialize in your council policy manual. In your council policy manual, there's a few items that, that we need to, we need to discuss. One is, what is the interaction? What is the set interaction between boards and commissions and the council? So, that being said, I'll use a specific example. So, we came forth at a study session with council to talk about an option to go out to bid or do an RFP for management of the Broken De golf course. That came to regular session. Council said, "You know what? We want Parks and Rec to, to study this further." Okay, so that's a formal referral to, to Parks Commission. So, then, what is the procedure, or what is the timing, or what is the expectation for Parks and Rec Commission to make a decision on that, or a recommendation, and then bring it back to council? And so, you know, how are you, whether that's at your regular meeting, are you formalizing that in your action? So, we expect this by a date certain, so perhaps it's just formalizing the action if it's a referral in the regular business meeting. If it's something coming to study session, what, what is your expectation for your boards and commissions? So, if, I know that Code Enforcement Advisory Committee has been talking about a lot of issues, and eventually wants to make a formal recommendation to the city council. So, when they do that, what is the timeline? Who dictates when that is, appears on a, on a study session item? Is that the role of the council liaison to bring it to the mayor and the city manager to say, "Hey, KEB discussed something, and we'd like it discussed at the council," whatever that might be? So, that's one issue, is really the, the standard procedures for the timing of, and the, and the interaction between council and your boards and commissions. And then, the other is setting the expectations of council liaisons that, that are not currently defined in, in code or, or in bylaws. Or if they are in bylaws, giving your boards and commissions a sense of what your expectations are for council liaisons. I know there's been a couple of questions that have come up related to a number of those items. So, those are, to me, the two things that, that need to be clarified in, in board and commission procedures. Everything else we can handle in, in a manual that, that we'll bring to you separately.
Are there best practices, policies for council liaisons and how to, you know, act with the board?
Not really. Every city council establishes its, its boards and commissions to serve different roles for the city. So, it really is incumbent on this city to decide what that relationship is. There is some information within the enabling legislation that creates these various boards and commissions that, that suggests the policy or practice that should move forward. But at this point, I really think that this, this body can determine what that should be. If it's a non-voting member, what the role of a liaison is.
Okay, thank you. Do you want feedback, or?
Yeah, and just to, we, we do have a suggestion, at least on the, the procedure, the interaction between boards and commissions and council, is to ask for board and commission review in two ways. One is just informal consensus. So, there, there's an important item that you think Parks and Rec Commission needs to take a peek at. So, four of you say, "Yep, I agree. That's important. Great. That issue is, is scheduled for." We notify the chairperson that, that the council's requested review of whatever item that is. The second is that formal referral. So, whether that's a topic that comes up, typically, this would be done at regular, your regular business meeting, where a resolution comes up, a motion, or it's just a proposal that you're saying, "Hey, we, we'd like to refer this to a board or commission for, for formal review." And, and that's where you'd want to set a date certain, most likely.
So, if council requests that it be referred to a board or commission, who is responsible for communicating that with the board or commission?
That's a good question. That is something we'd want to define in the policy. I think, I think staff would be comfortable if it was a formal referral to notify the chairperson. If it's more informal, perhaps that's the role of the council liaison. I think it depends on the, the type of action. And I'll just add, this is for items that are already defined. So, for the quasi-judicial functions, those procedures are, are already set. But these are, these are for some of the more informal topics.
Okay, any input? Councilmember Berentine?
In memorializing the appointment process, we've, it's come to my attention there's some inconsistencies in what the chairman thinks they should do in assessing whether they recommend to this council whether somebody should be reappointed or not. And it was my understanding previously that all we did was request kind of an attendance issue. And some, after the boards and commission training, have taken it upon themselves to expand that role, and it's, it's a little disturbing. So, are we going to be formalizing that as well as part of the appointment process? Is the process and the role that any chairperson plays in recommending to council? That we make it clear on exactly what their role is for that? And that I think that they ought to disclose that process to the board that they are currently with, so that all the board members, that, that chairperson is not on their own making those decisions, but making sure that the entire board knows if, what they're doing and what they're recommending?
Yeah, I, we didn't have a suggested process, revised process for appointments. I think it was just memorializing your, your current process, and that the reappointment process would be a part of that. I think one of the issues that we didn't touch in this, in this draft manual is what to do kind of in the midterm if a vacancy occurs, and you all have had to deal with that at various times. I think you're, do you deal with that tonight, later tonight? Or was that last week, two weeks ago?
No, that's today.
It's all blends together. Point being is that, you know, does the six-month time period work for you? Does the interview process work for you? And if so, then let's put it into some formal policy.
And that's what I'm requesting, I think, is that I would like that piece of it, since we take those recommendations and pretty much blanket reappoint people. We just blanketly kind of reappoint people. So, with only the request that we have made from the chairs, that they give us some kind of attendance information, so that we are not reappointing somebody who is not regularly attending, and that's chair being more responsible for that. And I'd like that included, so that we memorialize it and make it a little clearer, because it seems some boards are taking, some chairs are taking that beyond what I believe the council intended it to be.
Fair enough. We can add that to the policy draft.
Councilmember Olson?
We haven't, we haven't done anything with new boards and commissions since the training. So, do you know something that the rest of us don't know about how, I mean, I, there aren't very many, red one replacement of someone. Was that mishandled then, from your perspective?
No, I didn't say that. What I said was, I would really appreciate this process, including the reappointment process and what we expect from the chairs, and I think that's appropriate in this meeting to make sure that that gets added.
Okay, I just heard that you said people are taking this further than what, than what was intended that night. I would strongly want to keep seeing the meeting attendance. If we want to add criteria, I think it would be pretty hard to, to do that unless someone's really disruptive to a meeting. I think you'd make someone a judge of others and whether or not, I mean, sometimes you can have differences of opinion, and people don't like them, so they don't want them on again, which I would not want to do that. But I don't know if there are other criteria we'd all want to include in that. But certainly, the meeting thing, which actually doesn't need to be done by the chair either. It's, you all have it in your legal record, don't you? Is that how you get it? You don't really call the chairs and ask them for attendance, do you?
We get it from the minutes.
Right, okay. But what else would we want from someone, from a commission?
Well, just as a point of clarification, what we, we've been utilizing the same process for the past three years since I've come here, and it was the two councils ago who indicated that whenever there's going to be a, a, moving somebody up or reappointment, that there was a letter given by the chairperson, as well as the record of attendance. And in that letter from the chairperson was supposed to be some- And in that letter from the chairperson was supposed to be some factual discussion upon their participation, demeanor, whatever you want to say. And you've seen some of those letters that have come forward to this particular body. So, if there needs to be, or you would like to see us implement something more robust in nature than that, we're happy to do that. We would just need some direction from you to enunciate what those particular facets might be that we could share with you from an informational standpoint.
Those have been really general.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think anybody's ever not recommended someone, have they? I don't know, based on anything other than attendance? We have? I don't remember any.
One.
One? Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I was going to say, have a suggestion about, with the chairs also, to also remind the members when their reappointments are coming up. Because in one of my groups recently, a member didn't realize that he was up for reappointment and then his seat, so he didn't reapply. And so then he, his spot got filled and he still wanted to participate. So he, there was an email that he missed or something. So I wonder if we could just also ask the chairs to bring it up at the meetings or contact the person and see if they're interested in reapplying as well.
Absolutely.
And is it current policy that staff notifies the individuals that are coming up for a reappointment or do they notify the chair?
I believe both happens.
Okay.
And I think, I think there might be some confusion sometimes in terms when somebody goes from an alternate to a regular and I think so, those terms and dates get a little bit confused. So I think that's what happened in this situation.
Okay. And I, I have a suggestion that perhaps, that we let the council liaison be the one to determine, rather than the chair, about reappointments. I mean, I think that the, the attendance record absolutely we need. So, I think maybe, well, maybe perhaps both, the, the council liaison and the chair.
But about quasi judicial?
Oh, quasi judicial, that would be different. Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
Well, now that the city manager has brought it up, that the chairs were actually asked to give more information, I would like that included so that we discuss exactly what information we're asking for and that the board is included in the decision of the chair and at least informed on what they're writing and what's going on. So, it seems like it's a little bit loose, but at least now we're all aware that the chairs were told to go ahead and provide something more than just attendance, which I was unaware of. So if we could go ahead and make sure that that's put in here, I assume that was the council before, so I'm not saying that was wrong, but if it was not memorialized or documented, maybe they're a little confused on exactly. And some people are doing a little bit and some people are thinking it's a lot and in depth or some kind of analysis kind of thing, who knows? So, if we could just add that with, with that piece, so now that helps me understand where some of this is coming from, so.
Sure.
Appreciate it. We just need to have it be consistent.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I already agree with that. Manager, do you have the original conversation that we had for that? Because I vaguely remember us asking for more because some were concerned about it, but I don't remember us ever coming up with any particular criteria. It was a really general kind of thing, have they been participating? Have they come to meetings? And most of us probably took it as, are they an active participant?
That's exactly.
Not if there are other criteria, you know?
No, that's exactly right, council. There were no other criteria expressed by previous councils other than, is this person actively coming? Even if they're an alternate, are they still coming? And if they are on, are they participating? Those are the, those are the, and Councilmember Berentine is correct, very loose, but yet some participation by the chairperson indicate the level of acumen of that individual.
And we don't have a process in place where we've asked that, we've gotten them to give that in every single case because we haven't been getting those from everybody, right?
Right.
So.
Right.
That would need to be expressed if we memorialize this. It would have to be expressed, I think, to the chairs that that's their responsibility as well because it sounds like not everybody sees it or thought of it as something they needed to do. I really like this idea of making sure that the chair puts it on the agenda when terms come up and maybe we can just have staff who are the liaisons prompt that all the time because I'm sure they just don't even think about it and forget what's happening, what's coming. That would help.
Any other thoughts about that? Councilmember Wayne?
Thank you. So have we departed from your suggestion of the liaison? That's not the plural, but anyway, let's move on. Whomever the liaison is, is responsible for that piece you just mentioned? Are we not doing that? Are we doing that? Is the, the liaison along with the chair going to be responsible? I just don't know what we've decided.
And, and you know, I, I don't know that that's ever been memorialized before. I've just observed what happens on the boards.
Yep.
When we're in reappointment or appointment process. I, I think the liaison, and I guess I've never thought about this, but perhaps the liaison could be very helpful in giving feedback also in, in the reappointment process. But actually, I think Councilmember Berentine had a very good suggestion also in the fact that the board themselves, like we as a board, discuss things together and come to a final conclusion.
I guess if I had to weigh in on that, I would prefer it be up to the groups themselves and not have the council liaison be really a part of that.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
Yeah, I don't want it misunderstood. I was only suggesting that they, I, I agree with what Councilmember Martinez said. I was suggesting that the chair not send a letter to this council that either that member, board member is unaware of or that board is unaware of what the recommendation is. And if there is a concern or any issue or whatever the chair is asking or looking for believes is part of the criteria of this recommendation, that it is shared with the whole board and discussed with the whole board. No, no board member that we have appointed from this council should ever have some recommendation coming through to us that they are unaware of. That is, would be wholly inappropriate and nobody's trying to do a gotcha or embarrass anybody. And if there are some concerns, maybe they can be resolved within that board or, but the board has a right to know what the chair is recommending to this council. So that's all I was saying. The, the liaisons are always going to make, as council members, we're always going to make some comments, but I do agree with you that it should not be part of the process for the recommendation.
You know, I appreciate that also and I think another thing that is helpful, really, ideally, we want our boards to function well and so it is the goal of the chair to get participation. And so perhaps if participation isn't taking place, that needs to be something that the board would work on together to get that participation. Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, so posting and recording requirements, we, do we already have those?
Yes, and, and those will be, I mean, first of all, we, we follow open meetings law in terms of the procedure internally for getting approval of the chairperson. That type of stuff, we're suggesting to be handled in the, in the boards and commissions' policy manual, separate from the council policy manual.
Okay. And then, let's see, timing, a presentation. Have you gotten any answers to sending things out and getting information back?
I, I haven't, but I think what, what we can do is based on this discussion, draft some procedures, at least as far as reappointments go, suggest this process and, and more verbiage and, and come back with, for a little bit more clarification, especially for the role of the council liaison. So maybe we'll pick up at the role of council liaison next, next time for policy discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
I do have a question on the agenda setting for the chairperson. Are they under the same requirements for open meetings so that everything is distributed to their board at the same time and that after the agenda is distributed, that no changes are made to it prior to the meeting without, I guess?
Yeah, that was our suggestion in the training and, and I believe we'll be reflecting that in the manual.
All right, so that's staying in there.
It would be similar to the council policy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, you have enough to go ahead and.
Yes.
And then, are we at a soft endpoint to?
For policies, we are.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much and.
Thank you.
Now we're just going on to agenda item two and National Citizen Survey results.
Yes.
Assistant City Manager Mark Wolfe is here to discuss the 2018 National Citizen Survey results.
Well, you know what? I want to, I don't want to.
I am waiting for.
Crack on the log. Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I was like, where is that coming from?
So technically, we won't.
There's another presentation there, Sam. In the folder.
Can I ask a question before?
Yeah.
As you're going through, the slides that were produced with the general kind of percentages? Did we produce those or did the company produce those for us?
Those are from the company.
Okay.
Yeah, these are the final results.
And then, then we have the final survey itself with all the raw data, but this is an overall thing. Okay, it's really different. It's kind of the last thing.
There's two PowerPoints in the folder. This one I just did. So just to, by the way of introduction, the National Citizen Survey, as you know, we commission every once in a while. I believe the last one was done in 2014, Branglewood. There was previous ones in 2007 and 2009. This is a scientific survey conducted by the National Research Center in partnership with ICMA. Just to make sure all the information is there. So we received the final results last week from NCS and so we tried to take, we thought we'd take the opportunity as a part of your review. Is it not in there? Thank you. All right, here we go. So, as I said, as a part of your developing a strategic plan, we mentioned that two main mechanisms to gather public input on priorities. One was the workshops that you've already had and the second was the National Citizen Survey. And so, again, this is conducted every three to five years. It was sent to 1,500 randomly selected households to produce statistically significant results with a margin of error of about 5%. We also made this survey available to all online, to, to residents online, to all residents. We received 375 responses online as well. Those are not included in these scientific results that, that I'll be presenting. However, those are available in your packets labeled supplemental online results. I will say, what is remarkable, the demographics are different, but a lot of the survey results are very, very similar. So I think that's good to know, that, that those that are choosing to participate versus those that were randomly selected, we're, we're seeing some of the same trends. Not exactly one for one, but some of the same trends, which is, which is positive. All right, going through demographics to start with, by the way, I just want to say overall, there, there's areas to work on, but I, I think these results are really positive. So, I mean, everyone in the room should, should feel good about it. Our demographics. So, who's in Angledwood? Again, this is giving us an idea of our demographics in the community. This is not the census, but this is who participated in the survey.
Can I just ask a?
Yeah.
You said, you said 375 did the online and I forgot how many people responded to the actual for this?
So it was sent to 1,500 households and then they extrapolate out a representative sample from the 1,500. And so it ends up being about 350, I believe, are the results that are included in these statistics that are being presented tonight.
So, it wasn't 1,500 responses, it was sent to 1,500 and.
Correct.
About 350, which is about normal for this kind of survey between every single time we've ever done it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Exactly. So even if they received 700 results, they would only take what they felt was a representative sample of about 300.
But they didn't. They received, they did it out of 350, which would be pretty consistent. I just want to have the numbers so that we know.
Yes, and all, all of the, the raw data is included in, in your, in your packet as well.
All right. Yeah, I just couldn't remember the number between the online and that, so thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're very similar. All right, so demographics. Who's in Angledwood? I think some of these trends that you all are seeing, you've discussed, the communities discussed in our, in our workshops. We see between 25 and 44 here, about 44% of the community is, is in that 25 to 44 age range. Again, reflecting some of what we're seeing with, with younger families and people moving in, into the community. However, we're also very, we're still that middle class kind of blue collar, if you will, with, with seeing the majority of our community really in this 25, 25 to 99,000 range. So, again, a reflection of what, what we've seen in, in some of our discussions with, with the community in person. Looking at race and ethnicity, I think it's interesting to point out that according to the survey results, about 15% in Angledwood are Hispanic Latino and I, I think that's something to consider as we, not just from a policy perspective, but look at outreach and communication materials. And then again, our, our race statistics are up there as well. How long have you lived in Angledwood? I thought this was interesting to bring up. We seem to have a reverse bell curve here. A lot, less than five years, majority less than five years in the community, but a lot of folks have been here 20 plus. And so, you see people that have been invested in the community for a really long time and you see a lot of new, new or newer residents in Angledwood. And again, I thought this was interesting, looking at the split between single-family homes and multifamily homes. So whether that's townhomes, condos, I threw them into the same bucket. 58% single family, 42% multifamily homes or condos or apartments. And then, and I think we've heard the, we heard this in one of our community sessions and had a discussion about it, is very split in the community in terms of renting and, and owning and certainly the way that home prices are going, it's not a surprise that likely a lot of our new residents in the community are, are renting. All right, getting at some of the specific survey results themselves, and again, I just tried to pull out some of the highlights and trends. All of that information is available, available to you in the packet. I think really positive, 81% report Angledwood as positive response, excellent or good, is an excellent or good place to live. I think that's overwhelmingly positive. One of the areas where we exceed the national trend is in transportation, transit access. Shouldn't be a surprise to us, but maybe something we take for granted and to hear that back from the community and how that relates to national trends. And then some areas to work on certainly in our sense of community and our overall reputation hovering around about 50% reporting excellent or good. And I do want to say that your trend line is, is fairly flat from '07 to, to today in looking at the overall quality of life in Angledwood as a place to live in terms of our, our positive response. So that's good. We're holding, holding a line there. Overall perception of community characteristics, ease of walking is, is high, our recreational opportunities are high. Some areas that shouldn't be surprising if you pay attention to national economics, cost of living is, is lower and especially as you look at the variety of housing options and, and the availability of affordable quality housing. These are down for our community, these, these metrics since 2014, but they're in line with the national benchmarks. So the national benchmarks have also been declining in these areas. Use of city services. 42% of folks said they contacted the city for information or help. So that gives us an idea that a lot in the community are reaching out for information. 27% use our recreation centers or their services at least twice a month, which is fairly positive. We like to see that number go up a bit. Visited a neighborhood park or city park, 53% twice a month or more. So, definitely positive in, in that category. And then attended a city sponsor event, again, we see 54% not at all, so a number we'd, we'd certainly like, like to work on. And we know that we have been working with you on improving and. and, and improving the number of community engagement activities, and, and area focus for sure. Percentage of positive response for the quality of services in Angledwood. Police and fire services, 79%, 86% respectively. I think that's very positive. Wanted to point out some of the areas to work on, garbage collection, recycling, we don't provide city services in this area, but again, I think, in, in perception of, of what services are out there, garbage collection at 68%, sounds okay. It is below the national trend, and recycling is significantly below the, the national trend in terms of excellent or, or good response. 27% responding that, that is poor in terms of service. So perhaps that is aimed at some of the disparate companies we have. Everybody's kind of on their own, but that's a whole separate discussion. Looking at other city services, drinking water, an area we certainly need to improve. You all are very aware of our issues with low flow. We are hoping for a very, very wet spring. It's been wet lately, but we need even more moisture. In times of, of low flow, we struggle with the quality of our drinking water, as do many other communities, but this is reflected in community feedback. 42% rate drinking water quality as poor. City parks are on the other end of that spectrum, 75%. Rec center, 74%, excellent and good, so very positive. And then looking at public information services, we've seen improvement in, in attendance at city sponsor events, but again, we'd like to see those numbers go up from, from that 50 to 60 range. And the drinking water is, as you might imagine, lower than the national benchmark. I will say that this statistic is, is very good. City of Angledwood, in, in comparing other units of government, this does tend to follow nationally, but again, we're, we're at a higher rate, 74% overall quality compared to Rappel County and, and the federal government.
Is this still with the excellent, good as the response?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't say anything in that one.
And then governmental performance, overall direction at 61%, overall confidence at, at 47%, which I believe trends a bit lower over time. And then welcoming citizen involvement, again, we've tried to make some strides, 11% report excellent, but on the other end of the spectrum, 18% are reporting poor, so we, we would like to see some improvements in, in that area. So what does the community want to focus on over the next two years, is what they were asked? Essentials, so the top-rated categories, safety, economic health, those are themes that should be familiar to you. Were reported at our community workshops, and then either rating as essential or very important, the next level down, 79% between the two categories in aggregate, saying the natural environment is really important. And an area that we've seen decline in, in our trends in rating, our performance in, in protecting the national environment, which also relates to, matches the national trend, but also looking at sense of community was the next one on there as well. So, those are just some of the themes that came out of the survey, but also I think is notable that some of those same themes came out of your, your workshops. All right, last couple of slides. Options for funding. So we placed a couple questions on, on the survey related to, the city is considering funding options for infrastructure improvements. On one, looking at parks and rec specifically, and on the other, looking at other capital improvements. So, on this slide, it's a lot, I'm sorry, is, is five different questions, and I wanted to provide a little bit more information about these five. First of all, I think you can look at overall performance or direction of government, that's one thing, but to have citizens respond that in these areas, these first three areas here, maintenance of roads and bridges, updates of parks, shelters, restrooms, playgrounds, and capital improvements, 9%, 5% on capital improvements, we're not willing to pay. I, I think that reflects our performance as a community more than just asking the overall direction. So, I think what's notable, especially, you know, we don't have to, we don't have the time to spend on it tonight, but as we consider these questions moving forward, and what the community might support, I think you should feel very comfortable at least having the discussion. Now, at what level of any type of increase or, or debt the community is willing to take on for what projects, I mean, all of that still needs to be vetted and discussed. But I think at least in terms of having the discussion, understanding what the, what burden is acceptable to the community, I think these statistics, and, and if you look at some of the comparisons prior to when some, some other governments have gone out for a tax increase or bond, I mean, having those numbers be up around 80% is really positive. But I do put Pirates Cove and Broken T up there as an example to say, not to call them out, but to see there was a distinguishing, that, that the community distinguished between roads and bridges, or parks, infrastructure, and then other specific improvements that, that weren't quite as palatable, and you can see that in the data. I'm sorry, Dorothy, I know she's sitting behind me.
But is there, is there any correlation to that, in the fact that those two are enterprise funds versus the others are not?
Yeah, it could be. I don't, the enterprise funds weren't called out specifically, but you see really high percentages in, in Pirates Cove and Broken T for public-private partnership, so some public participation, and perhaps there's other models out there that, that the community would participate in, just not at the level of, of some of these others. And that makes sense, especially if they look at them as, operating as a separate business.
Thank you.
All right, very quickly, themes and takeaways. I said some of these already. I'll also point out that, that aging Angledwood residents are generally staying. I mean, we're seeing that in the, in the statistics. Our demographics as a state say that, you know, obviously we're gonna see 65 and plus be our highest growing population category, so how do we respond to, to aging Angledwood residents is a question going forward. Overall, I think we should be proud that the community has given us high marks on a lot of our services. That being said, there is room for improvement in a number of areas, instilling, continuing to work on instilling trust in some of our specific city services. There's also wide support for funding improvements, especially looking at parks and capital infrastructure. The examples given in the survey were water and energy efficiency projects were two of them. So, thinking along those lines and, and continuing the discussion with the community. So how do we use this going forward? It's a huge opportunity to incorporate this into your strategic planning process. This is a snapshot, and I just want to give a shout out to Chris Shaw, our graphic artist, who put all of this together. I did not, so he made this presentable for you tonight. But we can use this going forward, you have all of the other data there, in addition to what was highlighted tonight. You have a better understanding of your demographics, maybe guide how we reach people into, into the future with city services, but also in your planning, and gives us an idea of some of the areas to focus on going forward. Also, I think that there is confidence that, that the community supports some of your discussions, and at least there's a palette for continuing the discussion on project funding going forward, and, and hopefully this helps guide your discussion into your strategic plan and the goals for the future. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for this. Would you mind sending it to us, just this presentation separate from the rest of the agenda?
Sure.
I know the, a couple of the boards and commissions I'm a liaison to would be interested in this information, so I'd like to share it with them.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Councilmember Olson?
Question about, in the past, we were able to integrate past and present with some of it to do more statistical comparison. Is there any way to do that this time around?
Yeah, one of the appendices you have is the trends over time, so it does track that. It doesn't track it for all metrics, and it doesn't track it for demographics. So.
I'd love to know, we have the Latino ethnic circle that's changed, we know it's gone up, how much, and.
Right.
We know that?
Not, but based on the survey, I can look back to see if we did get that in previous survey, they didn't provide it in this appendix. We can also try to look at that, look at that against our census data, and see if we can see any additional trends.
Councilmember Berentine?
I would suggest that we just go ahead and continue the discussion. You'll have some more information available to us when we do the strategic plan, and you can incorporate some of that information.
Yeah.
And that, maybe as we plan the study sessions, we can go ahead and make sure that we at least end a few minutes early, so that we start the council meeting on time for the public as it's posted.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Olson?
I wonder if we, any kind of very specific reactions to send to you, if we want more data that maybe all you could collect it, and then, and then we wouldn't have to waste any more time on it.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn this meeting and resume next door in five minutes.